Good evening. Our January 24, 2019 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Jared Hill. Jared is a member of Boy Scout Troop 613 and currently a life scout. He's a freshman at Spring Hill High School and a proud percussionist in the award-winning Blue Brigade Marching Band. Jared also plays bass guitar in the Spring Hill Blue Note Jazz Band. Our prayer this evening is from the National Scout Jamboree. Please rise.
For this time in this place, for your goodness and grace, for each challenge we face, for each friend we embrace, we thank you, oh Lord. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jared. We appreciate you coming up and helping us out tonight. We're now to employee recognition. Tonight in employee recognition, I want to recognize someone that has worked tirelessly behind the scenes to help in so many areas of our city, but most recently as part of the Go-Giver Gala. He has worked tirelessly, between the mayor and the city departments along with other contributors. He helped manage 20 interviews for honorary videos, including a couple from out of town. The creation of the Go-Giver PowerPoint video was able to meet some very short deadlines. He handled Go-Giver donations on the city side, supervised the city's web and social media ads. He gave honest input, not that I always liked it. He's kind of the glue that kept the production together. Helped with the logistics of setting up Mon Cobb. No one really deserves more recognition than Sean Hara on this deal. Come on up, Sean. I know you know this about you. And he did all this with a minimum of very few bad words. I had more than a minimum of few bad words. He did great work with someone who just graduated from high school. And all this, seriously, while being a great dad, husband, church leader, volunteer, community advocate, most of all, he's friends with just about everybody. Sean is a great advocate for our community, for our city, for our employees. He's a wonderful go-between in between me, city staff, council, city staff, everything. When I need something, I pick up the phone up. Whoever I hit first on speed dial, that's who gets it. Sean, Keith, Laura, whoever it is. But it's always met with the same response. Yes, sir. No problem. Whatever you need. And that's what you want. You know, Sean's been in the city for over 15 and a half years. It's hard to believe.
I graduated.
He graduated at age three from high school. He started as a volunteer coordinator here. He currently serves as a media and tourism manager. He works for C-Supers to the area media. He's a Capricorn, whatever that means. I don't know why that's in there. He was also involved in a lot of other projects that were very important. You know, our Low Boat Championship Parade, Sean was a huge part in putting that parade together. My State of the City presentation I do every year, Sean is so intricate in getting that thing worked out for me and the slide presentation, along with Terry and Scott and those guys. It's just a great team. He's involved in the bond election, the city budget, oversight of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Sean does a lot of things. He wears a lot of hats, but most of all, he does it with the kind of attitude that I really, really appreciate because I get on to Sean sometimes, I'm like, why do you get on to a little boy like that? That's just not right. It's just not right. I feel terrible. But he always handles it so well because usually when I'm getting on to him, he's usually the right one, and I might have misread something the wrong way, and so he gets me back in line. But Sean, really and truly, thank you for all that you do. I couldn't do the areas that we've mentioned without you. The city owes you a huge debt of gratitude, and I appreciate you as being, number one, an employee, number two, a friend. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
For my community recognition, I do not have anyone I'm going to recognize simply because I don't make it a habit of recognizing people twice. And so, because if I was going to recognize someone, I'd recognize Julie Woods, of course, for her helping the Go-Giver Gala, just as I did Sean. But Julie's been recognized before, so I didn't have any of my community recognition tonight. And Julie, thank you. I know you're back there. Thank you for all your help with Go-Giver Gala. You and Sean work so well together that y'all make a great team, and I appreciate the help that you all give to me and to the community. So listen, comment. I have no speaker cards. If you would like to speak and fill out a card later, very well. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds. This past Monday night, we started our fourth teen academy. You've heard me talk about the teen academy before, a couple of years ago, two years ago when we started this. Monday night, we started our fourth one. We had an overwhelming response of our youth that are interested in coming to the teen academy. We had 30 applicants that applied for it and have come, and I want to thank them for taking the time and the opportunity to give up part of their time to come, spend the next eight weeks with us, and learn a little bit more about how their police department operates, and get some ideas from our youth on how we can help bridge that gap between the police and our youth out there. So I want to thank them for taking the time to come and participate in this program. We're also getting ready to start our second business academy. That'll begin on February 20th for business owners and managers. It'll be a nine-month academy. We'll meet on a third Wednesday of each month from 11:00 to 1:00 during the lunch hour. Anybody that's interested in participating in this academy can go to longviewtexas.gov/polices, download an application, and turn that into the police department. While we had a real good success with our first one, we have several applications already on file for the second academy. So we look forward to, again, meeting with our business owners and managers here in the city and talking about some issues that they might have that we can help with them. A few nights ago, January 22nd, at 5:38 a.m., we had an accident that occurred in the 5300 block of West Loop 281. You may have already heard about this through our media releases. After this first accident, we had a Good Samaritan that stopped, got out, was trying to help direct traffic, and then was hit by another vehicle that left the scene. The vehicle that left the scene, we put out asking for the community's help, was a 2003 to 2006 Lincoln Navigator that was silver and gray in color. And today, I can report, and I want to thank our citizens for the many calls that we got related to this accident and helping us locate this vehicle. And this morning, we did locate both the vehicle and the driver. So this investigation is moving forward for that accident. The very next morning, in the 500 block of Northeast Monroe, we had another similar accident where a pedestrian was struck and killed there as well, and the driver of that vehicle also left the scene. What we're looking for, and we're asking for the public's help, is helping us locate what we believe the vehicle involved to be a 1998 to 2004 Ford pickup truck. It'll be either a Ford F-150 or a Ford F-250, and it may be a four-door truck. This is just kind of an example of the vehicle that we think might be involved that's black in color. There will probably be some damage to the driver's side headlight area, front left-quarter panel of the vehicle. So once again, we're asking our citizens or anybody that may have information pertaining to this accident to please contact the Longview Police Department at (237) 1199, or they can call Crime Stoppers at (236) STOP. We had a great response with some good information that led us to that vehicle this morning. In the first accident, we're hoping by reaching out, our community will provide us some information and help us locate the second vehicle as well. And then I'd like to invite those that are interested. We're going to be having a retirement ceremony at 2:00 p.m. on February 1st at the Police Department Training Room. Billy Don England is going to retire after 34 years of service with the Police Department. I want to congratulate Billy on his retirement. It's been a pleasure to have worked my whole career with him, and he's been a valuable asset to the Police Department and has worked in many different areas of the Police Department. And I want to wish him congratulations and invite anybody that might be interested in coming down and meeting Billy and wishing him good luck in his retirement. So I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Bishop? Thank you, Chief. Chief Tillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you a few things that have been going on in the fire department since we last met. Infectious disease response training, sounds kind of fun, right? So how many of you remember back a couple of years ago, there was a little problem with Ebola in the state of Texas? And it really caught a lot of the first response community off-guard, specifically the Dallas Fire Department. Well, this training is a result of the lessons that were learned, and that pretty much ended up being a statewide event because of all the resources that it took to really lock in and isolate that situation down. We had the opportunity to send some members of our special operations team, our hazardous materials technicians, who are also trained as paramedics, because that's one of the unique things about dealing with infectious diseases. It's more than just your standard hazardous materials call because you're dealing with a live person, and maintaining their stability and keeping them alive throughout that process is critical to the success of that. So these responders received some very specialized training, and I feel that they're a lot better prepared should we ever be faced with that here in our local area. Let's knock on wood and hope that never happens. But we're in a lot better position than we were definitely two years ago. New apparatus and equipment purchases. I just wanted to update you on a few things. You guys remember probably some council action back. This special response trailer replaced an older unit for our special operations team. This is what we call our technical rescue trailer. So technical rescue incorporates like structural collapse, confined space rescue, saying the aftermath of a storm. Many of you remember the tornado that came through Councilwoman Ishihara's district. A lot of people trapped in houses, and what it takes to get in to access those people to safely extricate them from those hazards is the equipment that's carried onboard this trailer. This trailer, this brand-new trailer, we just got it into service not too long ago, actually got to make its first response out north of town to assist the Jutsam Metro Fire Department on a vehicle that ran through a house and stabilizing portions of the house to secure that structure so that those people could get back to life as normal. So it's already paying off for us. It's a great resource and an asset to have here in our local area. And this trailer was 100% grant-funded, so it cost the city nothing. We just respond with it and do what we do. New fire engine one, you might have saw a story that KLTV did a couple of nights ago. The guys are working really hard to get this new fire engine in service. As you know, this is part of our annual, or not our annual, but our ongoing apparatus replacement process. This is about keeping our fleet viable so that it's ready to respond and take on the tasks that we're met with out there every day. Keeping our fleet fresh, keeping our reserve fleet fresh and ready, and rotating these trucks around is a full-time job, and we have to pay a lot of attention to that. And we certainly appreciate the support of council when we come to you with these very expensive requests that keeps us out there working and doing a good job. Stop the Bleed classes. You remember several months ago, we have an initiative going on, and we just wanted to put another reminder out there. We're at the point now where we're ready to offer and roll these classes out in the community to businesses that may want them. So if there's a business out there that feels they may have a particular need for this type of training, it's a free course that we'll come in and provide, all the hands-on and everything you can stand. Please don't hesitate to call our Fire Administration, (237) 1210, or specifically our EMS Section Chief, Amy Dodgen, at (239) 5531. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Tillman? Thank you, Chief. Thank both of you guys. Hey, both of you guys, just so you know, I'm getting more and more calls, almost on a weekly basis, asking about the programs that you all are offering, you know, the Stop the Bleed courses, the training things. And, you know, of course, I'm referring them straight to y'all because I don't want to answer those questions. But it shows that people are listening. They're becoming more and more aware of what's available, and that's good because awareness is knowledge, and knowledge is great for the community. So the more we do that, the more people understand what's going on. It really is nice to see you guys out there providing that service. So thank you both for the efforts you're putting in for both police and fire. It's good for our community. Thank you both. Where to consent agenda? Any items councilite pull up for separate consideration?
Mayor Differ?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to have an action item. Consider all matters incident and ready to the issuance of the sale of City of Longview Texas Journal Obligation Improvement Bonds, Series 2019. I guess Mr. Martin is doing this. Yes, hi, John. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mayor. Council, John Martin with Hilltop Securities. Thanks for having us here this evening. We've got a great report for you, and we've provided booklets summarizing the sale and issuance of the first series from your successful authorization back in November. This tells a little bit of the story of what happened today, and how we got here, and so forth. Behind tab one, we have a thank-you note really from our firm. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to work for you all over the years. Behind that sheet is the members of the financial team. Yours truly is your financial advisor with Hilltop Securities. Bond counsel, longtime firm that you all have used, McCall, Par, Kirsten Horton, Dan Culver out of Dallas. The underwriters for this issue that were appointed were Raymond James, Estrada Heno Hosa, and RBC. They were all working out of their Dallas underwriting departments and desks for this issue. The underwriters' counsel was Norton Rose Fulbright. They represented the underwriters in the disclosure-ish part. So behind tab two, there are the rating reports from Standard and Poor's and Fitch. We spent a great deal of time. Must comment for Angela. She did yeoman's work here with, because the rating agencies can be pretty, they can be kind of pests. And there was a lot of follow-up questions and so forth, and you guys have kind of rollercoastered through the last five years or so, and we really wanted to make sure we told that story. You all have a great story to tell, and we want to make sure that the positives were all properly presented. And Angela did a fantastic job in full disclosure and so forth. I want to comment on the great staff that you all have there. Keith spent time on the call as well, and Roland as well, in terms of the calls. We had one call, we had spent three hours on the phone with S&amp;P, Fitch, and then the underwriters' counsel as well. So there's a lot of work that goes into this from the city standpoint as well. Just to highlight a few things in the rating reports that I think you all should be patting yourself on the back for, that if you look at the section headlines, very strong management, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity. So all these things tell me that for whatever you all have control over, you've taken very good, strong managerial control in terms of your budgeting and your financial well-being and minding the store. Some of the things that you don't have control over is while you can control your own debt, you don't have much control over school district debt and that sort of thing. So unfortunately, we have to, as a citizen, we pay taxes to both school district counties, so all the different taxing entities, when you look at the debt profile, that all comes into play as well. So that's spoken to in terms of the weak debt and contingent liability profile. They don't seem to have that much concern with your ability to be able to handle this new $50 million issue or the remaining $54 million that will be left after this issue over the period of the next few years. The Fitch report, very similar. They go into a little more detail. Again, one of the things in the third page of that report that shined out to me was the operating performance, where it talks about a high level of financial resilience during moderate economic downturn. That's very positive. The strong budgetary management is also reflected in this report as well. After the rating reports, behind the blue sheet there is the bond buyers index, and this gives you an idea of where interest rates have gone for tax-exempt municipal bonds over the last several years, going back to '05. And you can see the way it ebbs and flows through, and the far-right-hand column at the last Thursday, which was the last time this was done, we had left before the close of business today. So these same bonds that are indexed, basket of 20 different bonds, so this is like our Dow Jones Industrial Average. So each week, these bonds are valued and put a price on what they would sell for in the market, what kind of level they would be. And so they went from 409 to 419, so bumped up a little bit of help the past week, and we believe it's probably going to be very similar this week in Week 4 of January. But you can see, we kind of hit a high there in '18, and we've, 437 in October, and it's kind of started to come down from there. The high over that period was '08, 6%. The low was in '16, the summer of 2016, before the election, it was 2.8%. And you could see from the last several years there. So we still a good time. There's a chart back behind it that shows, really, we're right on the average of the historical average of the bond buyers index. You can see again, October 2008, where that high was, and the low, July 2016. So the average, 4.16, so we're at 4.19 today. So it's still a good time if you need to borrow money. Behind tab three is some pricing information. I wanted to show you all. A lot of times, new money, most of the time, we sell new money here in Longview. We've done these as a competitive sale, where we've taken bids and that sort of thing, and there's a certain time, date and time that these bids are due. Here, we did a negotiated sale where we appointed the firms, the underwriters, and then they did their work. We worked with them in terms of negotiating the price. They came back with orders. They go through an order period, which they did this morning. And this is the wire that goes out to all the investment houses. So I'm at this sheet here, that's an email sheet, right behind tab three. And this shows you what goes out, and the second page there shows the order period was out until 11:30 a.m. Eastern Time, so 10:30. So they went out at about 8:45 this morning, so about an hour and 45 minutes, they were marketing these bonds. And the priority of orders, so we wanted to make sure that the local residents had an opportunity to buy bonds. If they wanted to buy bonds, they were going to get bonds. So a lot of times, when you have these negotiated sales, the institutional guys come in, like Eaton Vance, who was a major buyer of your bonds, State Farm, USAA, they'll muscle out the little guy that's just wanting to buy, you know, 50 bonds, 100 bonds, or whatever. So we made sure the priority of orders was for local residents. It's important for them, for stakeholders, to have an opportunity to buy the bonds, and they did. I'll show you that here in a second. Behind that next sheet, there's two more sheets. There's a fold-out there that shows you, this is what the orders looked like as they were filled at the end of the order period. And there was a total of $109 million of orders, and you can see the maturities. By maturity, so 2037, they were very popular. There were 4.3 times oversubscribed for that particular maturity. If you look at '32 and '33, those were not fully sold. So there was, at the end of the period, there was about $3.2 million left over. The underwriters took those bonds down and put them in the inventory. They're going to have to work those off. So we made certain that, we felt like we got a good price here overall throughout the whole loan, all the way out to '39. And it's great that we can have the underwriters put up their capital and force them to do their job and have to work off these bonds. So it's always pricing is good in our favor if they don't all blow out, if all the bonds aren't gone at once. The next sheet shows you the performance, really, of the underwriting team and the senior manager. It's very typical that they're going to have the lion's share because all the orders have to flow through them. They keep the book. So you can see that the institutional, retail institutional and stock orders, if you look at the retail, $725,000 worth of bonds, Longview Bonds, were sold locally in Gregg and Harrison Counties. That's great.
What was that number?
725,000.
Right, okay.
So you see this number here.
Yeah.
So Raymond James was responsible for 575 of those bonds, and RBC sold 150. So, you know, it doesn't sound, in the grand scheme of things, but that is really a lot. That's really good that you had local participation of that kind of money. So the underwriters all supported it, RBC and Estrada, they did show up, and they put in some orders, which is what you want to see. Behind that next sheet shows you where the bonds ended up. So you see these different 17 accounts, and you can see the, I'm on the last page of the section. It shows you Eaton Vance, they bought 34, they put in for orders for $34.3 million of these bonds. So they're a major fund in Boston that took down, that are wanting the most of these bonds. Then UBT Investments, they're a bank trust department. And then there were a variety of things. Jeffries Retail, RNC Capital, Cincinnati. You can see the types of money, they are money-type there. So you see bond fund, they're casualty insurance, different individuals, insurance, there's money managers, bond funds, and so forth. So there was a good cross-section of buyers for this, so really pleased with the way the sale went. Finally, behind tab four tells you really what ends up happening, and what the debt service requirements are going to be, what the tax impact is going to be. And some of the sheets got messed up, I noticed, in some of the copies. So you should be looking at one that says sources and uses of funds. It looks like a balance sheet here. And you can see that the par amount of bonds sold is $45,670. There is a premium on that because the way the bonds were marketed at a premium amount of almost 5.4 million. The bottom line is you will get in the project fund, as planned, as $50,530,000. That was what we were told to provide for you, and that's what will go into the bank on February the 20th. Page behind that is a landscape page that shows you your existing payments, and then the payments on the 2019 bonds, and what will happen, what the new payments will look like. And that's a lot less than what we thought we were going to have in the pro forma. The overall, if you look at the footnote down there, the TIC, the true interest cost, if somebody says, what kind of rate did you get on your bonds, Mr. Press? 3.44%. That's the number, and was the TIC. We proformed this out at 3.75%. So we came in considerably better than our projections, which were great. So you can see then the INS tax rate projections out here, and that's also overall a lot less than was projected, which is great to come out of the chute because we got two more sales that we got to do over the next five years. We've got a lot more projects. This is phase one, and so it's good to come out below the pro forma so we got room in case the market, we don't get the tax values that we had hoped, interest rates move up further, that sort of thing. So it's nice to have that coming out. The next sheet is the bond production report. It shows you how those bonds are sold. There are, you can see that there's 5% rates to yield very low in the 2% range, and a lot of these institutional buyers that you're seeing, they're wanting that, remember, these bonds are tax-exempt. So they're wanting tax-exempt income, not at 3%, but they want it at 5%. So what they do is they pay a high premium. They pay 115 to 120 cents on the dollar in order to get that current income that's exempt from federal income tax. So it's a game that's played, but we benefit because it drives down the yield for us, and what ends up happening is we don't actually issue as many bonds because it's made up for in the premium. So you're only issuing 45.6 million to get 50 million. Finally, behind tab five is the offering document. This was what was used by the underwriters to solicit business, and it shows you the terms and conditions of the bonds, when we're going to pay. It talks about how taxes are levied in Texas. Talks about your, a great deal of information on the city, your different pension funds, how your retirement funds work. That's a big deal these days, as you all know. In the very back of that section is a lot of financial and economic and demographic information, a lot of tables that we put together that shows various ratios that the rating agencies love, and a lot of these people, it just makes their eyes roll back in their head. But it's numbers that they like to see. So a lot of analysis goes into this. I'm happy to answer any questions. The sale went very well. You all have a lot to be proud of. You maintained your ratings, which is a big deal these days, too.
Any question, Mr. Martin?
Mr. Martin, I was noticing that it says the economy, your appraisal of the economy, we said it's not really strong in this area in section two.
That is Standard and Poor's opinion, sir.
Okay, weak economy. Did that impact our interest rate at all, or?
I think it had, you know, no, it did not impact your interest rate at all.
Okay.
You maintained your AA rating. So that's what, at the end of the day, they're giving you a write-up, but you maintained your AA rating. It may have impacted your rating that they said, that weak economy, we're going to have to ding you and bring you down to a AA minus. That didn't happen.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
As John said, we used 3.75% for the pro forma as we were structuring the bonds, but I will remind you that when we were having the bond election, we used 4.5% as an estimate for the entire program. So we are considerably better than that. So, we are considerably better than that.
Mr. Martin, we want to thank you for all your work that you all have done for us, and this presentation was very nice. I actually can understand this, so I appreciate that. Taking it down to a level where we could get it and get a grasp of it.
He put me on a short agenda, Mayor, so, you know. I mean, so I can blab a little bit more.
This is good for both of us.
It's full disclosure, right?
We appreciate you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you all have done. Counsel, is there a motion?
Move to adopt an ordinance authorizing and selling the issuance of City of Longview General Obligation Improvement Bonds Series 2019, and approving all other matters incident and related thereto.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Would not consider resolution to send to the inclusion of a certain territory in Gregg County Emergency Services District Number 3, and said territory lies outside the corporate city limits of Longview. That would be Mr. Bonds. I will excuse myself on this, please.
Mr. Wright will take over in my absence.
All right, Mr. Gill, then. I guess you're here to answer any questions we might have concerning this?
I can give you a very brief summary of what this is about, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. The summary of it is that we have presented a petition to the commissioners. They've held a hearing on it. They're prepared to consider it at their next meeting at the beginning of February, for timing reasons, to get it on the agenda, to create an emergency services district to initially provide fire services, and ultimately, maybe even add EMS to that, to the citizens in the county, essentially north of the city limits, up to the Upsher County Line, over to the Harrison County Line, and over to Highway 300, an area that, I believe, comprises somewhere between 600 to 700 million dollars in property, and is currently protected by a group of about 27 volunteers with a $35,000 a year budget, working out of one facility on Skinner Lane. So, in the long run, it'll provide better services to the citizens out in the county north of the city. So, we've presented the petition. We've asked for the city whether or not they will consent to be included, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which, because of Longview's size, I believe it extends for about 3.5 miles past the city limits. And so, we've asked that that be included in the ESD.
So, are there? I would like to point out, the resolution reflects that we are, do consent to the creation of the ESD in that ETJ area, but we are actually not, we're denying consent for a few portions that the ESD has overlapped our city limits. Now, that's my understanding, that the petition was created as the city limits existed May 31, 2018.
That's correct, and I could give just a little bit of background, if that's helpful.
Sure.
The process begins with a petition that has to be signed by at least 100 registered voters who own property in the ESD. That process of gathering those signatures was done by myself, as well as other volunteers with the department, and started in June and July of last year. So, to set a boundary, it was set at the northern city limits as of May 31, 2018. Of course, since May 31, 2018, a few pieces of property have been brought into it, and that, as my understanding, is why the resolution would deny any inclusion of the city limits as they exist of the date of the resolution, which I believe is in conformity with the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 775, that governs creation of emergency services district, giving cities the authority to either consent or not consent. So, here, it would basically move the boundary of what's included to match today, as opposed to what it was when the petition started almost a year ago.
How much is this going to cost the city?
Does it cost the city anything?
Okay, how are they getting, how are we getting reimbursed for this, if we are?
Well, this doesn't cost any...
I mean, so our trucks go out there?
Well, right now, we have an inter-local agreement, and I could let Chief Stillman explain this if I get wrong on this. So, we have an inter-local agreement we have with the county that states that we will provide emergency services for vehicles that need extracation, is that right? Structure fires, grass fires, and some type of oilfield facility fires. So, in exchange, they do street maintenance work, and other work for us, like excavation and dirt work, and things of that nature. So, we're going to keep that inter-local agreement, these guys don't have their feet on the ground as such, and I would assume, and we have a, what's it called, some kind of agreement with you guys as well.
Mutual aid agreement.
Mutual aid agreement. We'll continue with the mutual aid agreement. It won't be with Judson Metro, probably be with the ESD if the ESD is created, so.
And the process from this point, Councilman Pearl, is that if approved by the city, it goes back to the commissioners, vote on whether or not to put it on the ballot, at which point the registered voters who own property in the ESD boundary will get to vote on it at an election, hopefully this May. And I would point out that when the City of Longview does provide services out into that area currently, of course, that takes resources out of the city that are not available for the city during the time they're out in the county. And it's a hope that, over time, with the ESD and the resources that provides, the need for the city to have to send those resources out in the county will decrease. And an interesting aside was the special response extrication trailer that was talked about by Chief Stillman. There was an incident that Judson Metro responded to. I was tied up, I wasn't there, but I understand a lady had actually accidentally driven her car through the wall of her garage and into her house, and was pinned in the car. And so, Judson Metro responded. The city came out, and once she was extricated and the car removed, there was a gigantic hole between her garage and her living room, immediately before this cold front blew through. And some of the materials on that trailer were used to patch that up and provide a temporary wall for the lady. So, that was some of the type of cooperation that currently happens. And hopefully, with the ESD, the ESD will be able to provide even more support to the citizens out there.
So, I guess you just want to hire your own permanent firemen, or?
Well, and this starts to get more into the area where the current chief out of Judson Metro would be able to respond, but it would not be full-time fire staff, but it would allow for there to be some paid people available during the day, when volunteers such as myself are not available. They would provide funds to do that. With the current budget, there's just no way to have anybody available. And occasionally, there are times where everybody's working or out of town, because it is a 100% volunteer force at the time. So, eventually, there would be some employees that would provide more availability. And then, as the city grows, you know, then it may eventually evolve into a full-time professional staff. But initially, it would just be to expand resources, facilities, and then have some staff available during times where volunteers are unlikely to be available.
What was the demographics, again?
It's from the northern city. I can tell you the area. I'd be remiss if I knew the, said I knew anything about the demographics, but it's north of the city limits, up to the Upsher County Line. And the east side would be bounded by the Gregg and Harrison County Line. The west side would follow that kind of southwest curvature of Upsher County until it hits 300, and then come back down to the city limits and back due west, or due east over to the Harrison County Line again.
And that's how many citizens?
I don't know the number of citizens. I understand from the appraisal district that it's somewhere between 600 to 700 million dollars in property in that area.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's a lot of property up there currently covered by a handful of volunteers, and with five pieces of equipment, five trucks, three brush trucks, one engine, and one tanker truck.
Sure.
Do we already cover the school out there, Chief? The elementary school that's out there, do we already cover that?
Johnston McQueen.
Yes, and then Judson.
Actually, in their primary district, we would respond out there if they requested our assistance.
So, we get the first, well, I say we, Judson Metro gets the first call. I'm here...
I mean, I think it's a good deal, because, you know, they need it. And I thought we always had this going on. I didn't know it was an issue, but...
And part of it is because it is volunteer. I think the city winds up having to respond a fair amount, either because of resources or personnel. But I believe Judson Metro gets the call first, and then, if nobody's available, or additional assistance is needed, then Longview supports.
You okay with it, Chief?
Council and Pro-Town Mayor, they're following suit with something that's already pretty much been established in our area, and it began back in, I want to say, the late 90s, early 2000s, on the south part of town, when ESD 1 was established in the Elderville-Lateport Department. And then, West Harrison followed suit several years later in the Harrison County part. I don't know the number of their ESD, but this is, this is the way the fire service landscape is changing across the state. So, it's not abnormal for this to be taking place in this request.
Any other?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So moved.
Thank you. We already had yours.
So soon? We still think the Mid-Age of Bonds could be in there.
Thank you all for handling that matter. We're not out of the community interest. Mr. Moore?
I'd like to remind everybody of my Town Hall meeting on Monday evening, February 11th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Pine Tree ISD Community Room. Next, as you know, Longview will be celebrating its sesquicentennial next year, and we will be celebrating it from January through May. Remember, we got the official t-shirts a couple of months ago. And I'm privileged to serve as council liaison to the Longview 150 Committee that's working on planning this celebration. And throughout this year, once a month, I would like to bring forth to the public one or more of the activities that we're planning, just to keep you all abreast of the kind of things we're going to be doing during the celebration. I think we can all agree that the Great Texas Balloon Race has become an integral part of Longview's identity. The Gregg County Historical Museum has offered a plan to offer metal replica balloons, like you see here, to be purchased by businesses, organizations, individuals, and they'll be permanently placed around the community. I think they have a 20- to 25-year life. And the purchaser will be able to design and paint their own balloon. The balloons are almost six feet tall and three feet across up at the top. Jacksonville has their concrete tomatoes. City of San Angelo has their sheep statues. We need our balloons. So, that's going to be part of our celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snoddy?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to say that we had a grand time this weekend, celebrating MLK Day. The young lady that I'm in the picture with, met her at one of the events, and she's here in the audience tonight, Ms. Ciara Evans, who is very, very interested, guys, in local government. Hopefully, one day, will be a future elected official. So, kind of wanted you guys to be familiar with her face, Ciara, would you please, then? You'll probably start seeing her in a lot of events and activities. So, thank you so much for coming. Had a good time this weekend.
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
I took place, or took part, in the MLK celebration last week. The pictures didn't make the cut tonight, so hopefully, we'll have them by the next meeting. But would like to thank everyone that was involved in that. It was really a great time. Councilwoman Snoddy was there as well, and thank you for your support also.
Thank you both. Mrs. Shahara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
I have a couple of things. First, I had a couple of calls about two weeks ago, I guess, and concerning, one was concerning a sanitation issue, and one was concerning a drainage issue. And I called Rollin', and I said, "Rollin', why don't you just meet me out there in the morning before we go to work? And you can see firsthand what these folks are having a problem with." And I said, "Sure." And he came out, and that day, both of those issues were taken care of. So, I just want to thank Rollin' for all your help on that, and the people of Spring Hill appreciate your help with it also. And then, it was kind of interesting, today I was at a LEDCO meeting, and Wayne Mansfield, the head of LEDCO, said he had been at a convention, I think it was a retail convention, there were about 80 different businesses there. And he said he was interested to note that one of the biggest things they commented on was that they were very interested in Longview because of the bond election, and because of the fact that the people of Longview are working so hard to move Longview ahead. So, people are taking notice of what we're doing here in Longview.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Appreciate that information. Mr. Pearl?
I'll have you thank him.
Mr. Bonds?
Oh, Lord.
Oh.
Laura? Okay. I had a real humbling experience yesterday, going to the Veterans Stand Down Bill. The people that were there, it's unreal how so many men and women gave so much to us, that we can sit up here and do what we do, and live like we live in this town. And it's a humbling experience to see all these people. I, I don't know. It'll crack you up. I mean, it'll, it'll bring you to your knees and think about what we are given. So, I was privileged to be able to read the proclamation for the mayor and council, and I hope to be able to do it again in the future, because that's, that's something that you really sit down and think about.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. You're exactly right. I appreciate your attendance there, and filling in for us, and for the way it touched you, and it should touch us all. Mr. Bonds?
I'll have you thank him. Okay, our Homeless Resource Day is tomorrow, January 25th, from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Longview Exhibit Building, located at 1123 JC Drive. Showers, haircuts, thank you, Mr. Wade. Eyeglasses, laundry, housing information, food, personal care products, veteran services, medical care, mental health services, SSI benefits, text identification cards, employment counseling, job placement, and vaccinations for pets for the homeless will all be available. Lunch will be provided. To learn more, visit longviewtexas.gov/homlessness. I just want you all to know what an outpouring of support we have received over this, our second annual, I'm going to call it, Homeless Resource Day. I have had people calling me all week long, saying, "We saw your video, we want to donate." It says Ace Hardware out in Lakeport. They called me and said, "We put something together, why don't you come out and pick it up?" I couldn't go today, but Laura sent someone. And, you know, people in Lakeport are looking at what's going on with us and helping us. Texas Bank and Trust, they called me yesterday, "Can we take a picture with you?" I said, "Yeah, I'll do it Thursday." They said, "Oh, we have to do it Wednesday." I couldn't do it Wednesday, so, but over and over. Ms. Marie Edwards, sitting in here in our, in our audience, made a donation in honor of myself and Chief Bishop. The outpouring is unbelievable, how people have stepped up and just done it. And it's not stopping. We've asked, and once again, Longview has answered the call. Every time that bell rings, someone and somewhere all across our community is saying, "Hey, I'm in, I'm in, I'm helping you, and I'm going to take care of things." And I really, really appreciate that. I appreciate it, but those that it affects, really appreciate it. That's what it's all about. And tomorrow will be a great day. We have over 100 booths tomorrow, is that right, Laura? I saw the list, which is fantastic, so many people participating in this event. I really, for something that people said it could never happen, it's happening, and it's happening in a big way in Longview, Texas. And once again, that just adds to what our community is doing to help those around us to be, we're just a better community. We're just a great community to live in. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the people that have stepped up. I appreciate all the city staff has done to put this together, Laura. It's going to be a great day. So, if you have a chance, you should go out there tomorrow between 8:00 and 4:00 o'clock. I think you'll, you will once again be touched by what's taking place in our community. So, thank you all for the effort that's being placed on that, on that day. See, the Longview Partners Province will be hosting the Understanding the Struggle of Poverty Workshop on, workshop on January 29th at Moncom Convention Center. This workshop is beneficial to anyone working with people living the day-to-day struggle of poverty, including business owners, churches, schools, governmental agencies, and law enforcement. The workshop fee is $25. Register online at longviewtexas.gov/poverty. Partners in Prevention, Unity and Diversity Committee will host the Unity Honors Luncheon on Wednesday, February 20th, from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. at Moncom. This year's recipients are Cassia Williams, our former council member, and Liddell Kay, both very, very wonderful people that deserve this award. Tickets will not be sold the day of the event. Visit longviewtexas.gov/unityhonors for ticket information. Y'all got that. Tickets will not be sold the day of the event. If you want to go, get your tickets ahead of time. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the City of Longview. 79th Annual East Texas Golden Gloves Regional Box Tournament is scheduled for January 31st through February 2nd at Longview Exhibit Center. You can attend the event as a spectator, if you've been signed up to compete. Wait a minute. Don't sign up to compete if you're not one of those boxers, you'll get yourself hurt. That is done. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. Doors open at 6:00 PM. If you haven't seen those guys' box, it's very impressive. That's a, that's a highly specialized skill, and it takes a special athlete to do that, but it's a lot of fun. It's very entertaining if you like that kind of thing, so go check that out. For the first time in Longview, Texas Distilleries will fight it out for the title of best bourbon in Texas. Join Jim Murray, author of the Whiskey Bible, on Friday, February 1st at the Hilton Garden Inn to taste Texas bourbon and crown the champion. Proceeds to the event will benefit the Longview World of Wonders, a hands-on discovery center for children. Seatings limited, so secure your tickets now at texasbourbonshootout.com. The Freezer Fanny is a competitive bike ride through the piney woods of East Texas, taking place Saturday, February 2nd. This ride is the primary fundraiser for East Texas Lightnin', an independent team of individuals who's with intellectual developmental disabilities that compete in Special Olympics events. This fundraiser makes it possible to provide the athletes with uniforms, equipment, and the opportunity to travel for competition. Register early to be guaranteed a long-sleeve T-shirt at freezerfanny.com. That's another very worthy endeavor, that if you enjoy riding bikes, or even if you don't enjoy riding bikes, you don't have to do the whole thing, just go out there and ride and enjoy, but that your, your, your entry and your donations are very, very useful in this, in this, for this group of people. For information on these events, please check out the calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com, or city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. Before I move on, I want to also just make two comments. I want to, we mentioned earlier with Sean and then Judith Goget for Gala, but I want to take a minute to, number one, thank all of the council members for being there. You all's support means, means the world to me, Keith, city staff, everybody involved, but the production was once again phenomenal. City staff, they go above and beyond. ModCob staff, those people are there nonstop. They stay late, they come early, they work hard, they never complain. My hat's off to them, they do a great job. Our media department, great job putting it all together. Everybody involved stepped it up. And you know, what, what always concerns me about doing an event and then doing it again is that you, you can't repeat the first year, you know? Your first year is always, you know, the big splash, and the second year, you take a big nosedive, you, "Ah, what a, what, that was a bomb." Well, that didn't happen this year, and I'm so proud to say that, because we stepped it up. I think our recipients were fantastic. The turnout was great. We had more people this year. You always worry about the, you know, will you raise as much money? Well, we raised $239,300, including in-con services again this year, and that's scratching right about what we did last year. So, you know, that, that is, that's a big, that's a big pat on the back for City of Longview and the citizens and all of you all that support that. I really appreciate it, because this money will be put to good use, and every single dollar stays right here in Longview, and it'll be put to use for things that will make our city a better place to be. And if you went, you noticed how good the food was, Charday, your daughter, Nona, just knocked out of the ballpark. She did a fantastic job, and I'm so proud to see a graduate of a, of a high school here in Longview doing it and making good in the, in the community and giving back to the community. She did a great job. So my hat's off to you, I know you're proud of her. I was proud of her, too. I couldn't even hardly mention her. I choked me up talking about her that night because she did such a good job. She's just a doll. And before I get on the survey, I just want to take a moment, I want to disclaimer. I know y'all are going, "Why is he wearing his T-shirt, no coat and tie?" Okay, listen, gang, I didn't expect to still have this thing on. I've got it off, I don't know how much longer. The last meeting, I was able to put a shirt and a tie on because my wife was able to tie the tie for me, because you cannot do that one-handed. I don't care who you are, you cannot tie a tie one-handed, and you can't button a shirt. This doesn't, this doesn't get to here. But my wife's out of town, and so there wasn't much, much option for me tonight, was to put this on or, or nothing. So, you know, you gotta take what you get, and that's the best I can do. And my office girl said, "I'll, we'll, we'll do it for you." I go, "Who's going to take it off of me? Because I can't get, I can't sleep in that shirt." So sorry, forgive me, but it's just part of recovery. So hopefully by the next time I have a meeting, this will be gone, and I'll be a happier person, because that means I'll be sleeping again. Okay, survey time. When was the last time you visited Teak Park? Within the last year, three years, five-plus years? I've never visited Teak Park. Okay, I, I love these answers. 38% within the last five years, that's good. What I love the most is 11% has never visited Teak Park. 11%, I'm coming after you, because you're going to go to Teak Park, you're going to love it, you're going to see what a gem it is for our community. And just like Steve was saying, when you go and recognize what these veterans have done in our, for us and in our lifetimes, through their lifetimes, you go and visit Veterans Park at Teak Park, it is, it is the most humbling thing you will do in this community. And you, when you think about that and you look at what's taking place, it, it just, it's, it's an experience that you should all go do. And if you haven't done it, shame on you. Go to Teak Park, you don't have to have a child to go to Teak Park, you can go there and fish, you can go there and look at the Veterans Memorial. Go there and experience Teak Park, because we're fixing to make a bunch of improvements out there, and we're going to make that a really, really neat showplace for Longview. I'm just telling you, so you should go see it now, it's just going to change in the next year, I can tell you. Who do you think will win the Super Bowl? This is hysterical. Okay, 35% said they're going to watch the Super Bowl. Well, because Dallas didn't plan, I guess, right? But always Tom Brady, 23%.
Can I put in my vote for Tom Brady?
I know you're a Patriots fan, and whether you like him or not, the guy's a winner, you know, you can't help it, but it's pretty interesting to see anyone but Tom Brady, 21%. The commercials always bring out a, a great thing for our, for, to go out and watch, it's, it's pretty fun. But yeah, I thought that was pretty funny. So thanks for participating in the survey. I really appreciate, you know, the funny question's always just entertaining for me, because I think it's a silly question that I ask, but I appreciate the first question because it gives me 11% of our population that I'm going after, so I appreciate that. Okay, lastly, scholarship time. Mayor Matt's scholarship is time to get it going. We'll have four $2,000 scholarships. Thanks once again to Ms. Shihara's contribution of her council stipend, along with mine. We have made that for four $2,000 scholarships for residents that must reside in Longview, must be a graduate or senior from either Longview, Halswell, Pontchar, or Spring Hill. Apply by March 29th. Go to longviewtexas.gov/scholarship. And once again, it's just a one-page essay, that's all it is. And the topic this year is just a little bit different. We've been asking kind of similar questions, like, "What would you do to improve Longview? Have you, what have you done to improve Longview?" And this will be our fourth year to do this, this scholarship, and I cannot wait to read the essays, because this year, the essay is going to be centered around Highway 80,